Call the roll.
Going.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Stein.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
alphabet.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Instrom.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
No changes this evening.
To approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
alphabet.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Berth.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, discuss downtown tree project, and I'll turn it over to the downtown tree committee.
Yeah. Alright, um, I think, let's start at the beginning. We have a couple of new people, um, who haven't been here through this whole Main Street process. So, I want to take a minute and introduce ourselves and kind of tell you who we are, why we're here, speaking to you. Um, my name is Kalin Mauder. Um, I'm chairing the downtown group committee. This committee started with our Main Street application, which we applied last year. We didn't get it. Um, but we're going to be deployed again next year. So, I would like, if you're on our committee, if you will stand up and introduce yourself, so that people kind of get an idea of who's all working towards this, because it's not just me.
I'm in Shaker. I have the bookstore, bookshop down there on Story Street. Important, downtown could use some help. And so, we're trying to look out.
I'm John Johnson. I'm the principal at the high school. I wanted to get involved. Uh, my wife and I moved here in May. And then I also, I think it's a great opportunity for students to be involved in our community as well.
I'm Suzy Thorgren. I grew up in Boone. Moved back after forty years and remember vital driving downtown and know what other small towns have done and eager to see Boone on that path. It was very, um, the grand, the remix, and we were downtown with each other. Excited to see downtown get revitalized.
I'm Dan Wood, and I'm a visitor downtown, and I knew to Boone, uh, last ten years. I've noticed a drastic change in our downtown and really, really need to start revitalizing our downtown to keep growth in this town.
I'm Linda. I'm on the committee also.
Yeah, so we have several other people that kind of make it today. Um, but we, we put in a lot of hours towards making our downtown and our communities better. Um, so, Main Street is really why we're doing it. The premise of Main Street is that it's not just a group of citizens that gets together and tries to do these things. The premise of Main Street is you have a partnership between the city, between the county, between businesses, between service organizations, and community members. So, that's really what we are here trying to build, is that partnership with the city. Because without that, we will never get a Main Street designation. It's really important to people that select for Main Street, that we have this partnership between all of these groups in our communities. Um, and so, when we didn't get Main Street, we had a downtown assessment in April, and I think a lot of you were there for that. And, um, did you, you got the assessment, right though? But you know that too. Did you share that with council yet? Okay, so you all have, it's lengthy. They were very thorough. Um, so if you haven't had a chance to look at it, I encourage you to take a look at that. But one of their primary recommendations was that we put trees back downtown. It checks a lot of boxes for what Main Street's trying to do, um, and just general revitalization of downtowns. So, as our committee is thinking about Main Street application twenty twenty-four, we said, what can we do? And this seems like a relatively easy project. It checked a lot of the Main Street boxes. City partnership, citizens, service organizations, lots of people volunteering and giving their time. Um, and it also really going to look good on our Main Street application, according to came forward. To say that even without the designation, we were able to pull together these people and these groups to make this happen. Like, it's just one more thing that gives us credibility for getting these trees. Um, so that's why we picked this project. And we've been here a couple of times to kind of tell you a little bit about it. But after our last meeting, Linda and Terry sat down and said, what questions did I feel you guys needed to answer for you for this project? So, just so you have it, these are the list of questions, and these are what I'm going to go through tonight. Um, if you have questions that are on this list, feel free to jot them down. And if I don't cover it by the end, then let's, please have a discussion about any other questions that you have. Um, so on this list, question, um, you also have our proposal.
Yep.
Um, it looks like this. The Jamie Williams, who's also on our committee, put together, they kind of have all of the information that you need in one place. Um, we're also kind of using this to give out to the community, as well as the flyer that I passed around for you, so that people can have just all the information. Um, so we're planting twenty-nine trees. The, you guys have all seen this form before too. I wanted to give it to you again. It says the proposal. Um, kind of a bigger, better picture of the places where the trees are going to go. It also tells you what species of tree, and it passes, this is the list of species, um, that Eric fixed. Um, if you're on this, it's probably famous. Um, Eric Paul, he works for Freedom to Repair, who's a certified arborist. He's done work with urban planning and trees and things up in Rochester. So, he really has experience in picking what trees are good for these places. Um, and he's been volunteering all this time for us, to help us get this stuff. Last come to, we talked a little bit about sidewalks, and I want to table that until the end of this one, alright? Um, Eric has also put together a tree, don't sit down. Eric's also put together a plan, uh, for a three years of maintenance. Part of, um, our fundraising was to submit a grant to the DNR, um, for five thousand dollars, and in that grant, we have to show a ten-year maintenance plan. So, that's within our three-year, three-year grant, um, that Eric put together for us. And, so, in three years, uh, we are going to ask the parks if they would even do that. We had an initial meeting with them a couple of months ago. Um, they'll get your property on the agenda. We've been in contact with Mike Cornelius and council's recommendation, so that we get on the agenda and flush out, um, what that's going to look like. But Eric has told us that most things will happen in the first three years. The parks really aren't going to have a whole lot of time dusted in those next three years. Um, so our timeline, we ordered all the trees. Um, we've set a planting date for September eighteenth. Eric has called in locations for all of the spots downtown, and since I mean that we get a green light today, the locations will happen. Um, well, Eric will start prepping the sites this week. Um, what that's going to entail is he's going to grind up the stumps, plump up everything, put the dirt back. So, there's not going to be any empty holes, open holes and stuff downtown. Um, he's just going to get the sites ready, and then on the eighteenth, a group of us will come out, take out the dirt, put in the trees, put the dirt back. And, so, and again, the rain date for that is the twentieth. Um, who's going to plant the trees? Our committee all involved. Um, we've extended invites to lots of other groups, trees, main ledges, arboretum, parks, garden club. Um, and if there are any of you that would like to come and help plant trees as well, we would love to have you. Um, we've also talked to the businesses. We thought it would be kind of cool if whatever business owners, uh, is in front, if they wanted to come and get their hands in there and help with that as well. Um, it's probably going to take about six hours on that day, and we'll just do a block at a time and split it all up that way. Um, okay. So, for fundraising, last one. Um, this is the grant that we submitted to the DNR for five thousand dollars. And in there, it breaks down all of its costs. The planting costs, the tree costs, all that kind of stuff. There's also quotes from Salama's. We ordered as many trees as we could from my Salama, because he's local. And anything that he couldn't get, uh, bounty rich out of crimes, is kind of filling in those gaps. Um, so far, we've raised enough money for the trees, the planting, and three years of maintenance. I mean, that we get the grant, which we will hear back on September eighth. So, we don't know if we got it yet, but we'll know by this.
We get one.
Um, our group is doing the fundraising. The chamber is the one kind of being our overhead, because they're a five-on-one system. And, um, they created a separate account for us. All the checks are coming from the chamber, nothing made it as a tree project. So, anyone who's online listening or in the service, who want to donate for the trees, uh, you can take a look at the chamber. Also on the chamber website, there's, uh, donate button, and you can easily just go through the chambers and, um, donate for that. Our fundraising target for right now is just for the trees. Um, we decided it would continue to use roads that's up in a different phases. So, this one is just for trees. Um, and the next thing would be to do the grapes, um, but we're going to finish this, and then we're going to move on to that. Um, fundraising, we want to have it all done by, well, when the trees grow in, that's when we need something. Oh. Additional considerations, sitting back on all three locations. Waylon, did Jamie talk to you about that? Um, I mean, we've had several conversations with Phil as well. Um, an itemized list of different capabilities, that's in the proposal that Jamie handed out. Watering, trimming, uh, that sort of thing. And then, we had talked about sidewalks. We'll circle back to sidewalks a lot of times. And after talking with Eric, um, it's about three years, we can do whatever we need to do to those sidewalks, and it's not going to in- impact the new implanted trees at all. So, we decided there's a place that can easily be done. Questions do you have, guys?
We have, like, we're applying for another restriction from the law. We've been having that paper working with the city going in, trying to have that before we use special.
Allow me time to get it to council. Please.
I think it's due in November. Yeah. We have time, I'll just, yeah.
One que- couple of questions.
Yeah.
So, phase one, the timeline is the eighteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any timeline yet? Speculation on phase two, or?
So, the grapes turn out to be a lot more expensive than we had hoped they were. Um, we really want to continue to use local artists and businesses. So, we think that's important, instead of just kind of throwing in some new plastic and firing it up. Um, so, once the trees are in, then all of the money that we continue to raise will be forced to be placed. That'll, I, I mean, it would be great if we could have them done by our application next May, um, for the Main Street, but we'll just kind of have to see. I think that'll be a project that it's not seasonally dependent. The three years that they've been going down, we would have to wait another year, because that's the reason. So, the grapes don't have that kind of timing issue. So, whenever, um, we have the money to start that process, we've reached out to, so, John's been in contact with the metal workings program of the high school, and we would like for the students to design maybe like four kind of cornerstones. That can be something different and special and give them some ownership. Um, the other ones will probably be about the same. We've got contact with the state of Oklahoma. And he wants, you know, once we pull the trigger, we're going to have to pay him at least half of, so. Until we have that money, we can't pull the trigger on the grades.
Right.
And the students, they don't start that till next semester, so.
Our initial timeline was spring.
Yes.
But that might be more lofty than we can accomplish, but.
And then, just two questions for the arborists. Uh, the ones that are really close together, KYC, RB, they're only on story. There's no concern that they're going to be too close together?
The RB, the red bud, it's a really small stature tree, so it will be, uh, spreading and being big and growing into anything. Uh, where they can take a proper be, a little bit of a barrel, upright. And so, um, I, I think they, they look close on the map. They're not quite as close as, as they might look there, but the intention is that you have, well, one that's taller tree and one that's smaller tree, got to get together and pair it together nicely.
Okay, and then, there's one bed or planter, or whatever you want to call it, across the street from Belucci's in front of that. I don't know, it's kind of a gun store or?
Bookshop. Site track hobbysters.
There's a dead tree there. Is that in this?
They took it down.
Oh, okay. And then that's in the plan?
The, the plan has not been adjusted for that, I don't think. There was discussion last time about the tree, um, on the northeast side of the green space against the building. Um, and that may be able to move over, uh, able to take that same tree and not plant it against the building, because the concern for the side of the building. Uh, and place that over against the, in that neighborhood. Or I can add another tree, or a three-inch tree, um, that matches the summer crossing that you're doing.
The other thing we talked about too, in kind of a longer-term plan for the space, was to have kiosks. One on the north corner on ninth, and one down on the south on seven, as a place where we can put like, maybe historical stuff. Or there can be a sidewalk, people can put signs and what's going on. Um, so we also thought about the tree that's down there, leaving that space for the kiosk and putting it up where Susan's tree was.
Okay, thank you. I just have one, uh, said, any, if any sidewalk currently damaged is replaced or repaired within three years, it will not affect the new tree. Is that what you, I misunderstood, which?
The root system last year will be enough to be damaged.
Perfect.
At that point.
Perfect.
They're spending their time trying to establish their.
Hey, cool.
Appreciate all the granular detail on here. It's really fun.
You did a nice job, Linda.
Right.
I, uh, said we need a few more details shared here.
Good.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, them planting trees downtown.
Oh.
Call the roll.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
alphabet. Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Berth.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
That's too bad.
Yeah.
Okay, number?
Let us know if you want to come and help plant trees that day, Tim. Anytime.
Okay, B, public hearing on the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of water revenue capital loan notes not to exceed one hundred and forty thousand dollars through evidence, the obligation of the city there under. Written comments?
Yeah.
The public comments, that this public hearing is closed. Um, question on each of these resolutions.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thirty-one, thirty-two, resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand dollar water revenue capital loan notes.
The most.
I guess. Call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
alphabet.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Berth.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Okay, number two, thirty-one, thirty-three, resolution approving and authorizing a form of interim loan and dispersment agreement by and between the city of Boone, Iowa, and the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of a hundred and forty thousand dollar water revenue capital loan notes, series two thousand twenty-three, of the city of Boone, Iowa, under the provisions of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment and said notes.
Hello.
Second. Call the roll.
alphabet.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Berth.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Okay, C, public hearing on the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of sewer revenue capital loan notes not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand to evidence of the obligations of the city there under. Any written comments?
Yeah.
Public comments, that this public hearing is closed. Uh, thirty-one, thirty-four, resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of it not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars sewer revenue capital loan notes.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Berth.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thirty-one, thirty-five, resolution approving and authorizing a form of interim loan and dispersment agreement by and between the city of Boone, Iowa, and the Iowa Finance Authority, authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of three hundred and fifty thousand dollar sewer revenue capital loan notes, series two thousand twenty-three, of the city of Boone, Iowa, under the provisions of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said notes.
So moved.
Second, call the roll.
Instrom.
Yes.
Berth.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
alphabet.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Okay, number four, report of standing committees, policy administration, Linda.
No report.
Public safety, David.
I'll report, your honor.
Utility committee, Terry.
We will have a meeting on September twelfth at four thirty.
Okay, economic development committee, Terry.
No report, your honor.
Uh, department reports, building official, Dave Aids.
Uh, tonight, we're here to revisit, uh, the alley vacation request, uh, from last council meeting by Trinity Luther Church at the direction of council. Um, Mr. Kasadi, from, a representative from the church and the neighbor, Whitman, came together and talked about an agreement on, uh, distance. Uh, they have both agreed to an eighteen-foot, um, distance from the north, uh, property line. And so, we're bringing it back to council with that recommendation to you guys, and asking for a motion to move forward on that process.
So moved.
Second, are all the neighbors notified then?
Uh, yes.
I have a, a question. Is that kind of right where their playground ends? Is that kind of that?
It will be in the middle of all of Trinity's, um,
Property there?
Property, yeah. Right there. So, the only, moving that property line only affects Ms. McWhit- Ms. Wickman's property, giving her a buffer zone to be able to pull out of her parking area right now. Yeah.
Call the roll.
I don't think I got a second.
Oh, second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Berth.
Yes.
Henson.
Yeah.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
alphabet.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Finance officer, Andrea.
No report.
City attorney, Jim.
Report, your honor.
Public works, Waylon.
Real quick, I know, probably a little early to talk about it, but, uh, this year's s- salt order was placed in July and has been delivered, so we have our allotment for salt.
Good, good. Thank you. Uh, engineering, Bill, anything under that?
No, sir.
Public safety, Chief Adams.
Yes, your honor, a couple of items. Uh, the first item is, uh, with, uh, two thousand twenty-one FEMA, uh, assistance to firefighters grant. Uh, that fire truck will be, um, ready for inspection in Bradenton, Florida, at the Pierce plant in late October. And so, I'm requesting out-of-state travel to accept, uh, that fire truck.
The most.
Second, call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
alphabet.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Berth.
Yes.
Uh, before I move on to that, uh, in the, when we accepted the grant, it's a twenty-four month grant period. I just received notice. I filed for an amendment through the, uh, FEMA, and with everything that was going on in Florida, I was, uh, with the hurricane, I was worried. But I just did get the notification today that they accepted the amendment through the end of the year. So, uh, it takes us, because that would have put us, I believe, October thirteenth is when we would have had to have the money spent by. We were able to get that done. I think, Andrea, you were on that same email. It just came about four-thirty this afternoon, so. Uh, so I, that's good that they accepted our amendment. Uh, second thing is, is, um, there's an event, uh, downtown, I believe, this coming weekend. Uh, and with the Boone Valley Brewery, they want to extend their, they have a small outdoor service that is basically right by their, their front door. They want to extend it to the streets. Uh, this is something that they've done more, uh, primarily more in Oktoberfest. But, um, you can see the drawing up on there where they basically want to, uh, close Seventh Street from Story Street to an angle over to their, um, their brewing, uh, location, and, uh, it requires a amendment to their current alcohol license. And, uh, the police chief, Dave Aids, and myself, all of them looked at it and approved it.
And this is for Sips on Story, right?
So, yeah, I couldn't remember.
Yeah, and there's going to be a lot of foot traffic around, so not having cars go through here might be a good deal.
Yep.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
alphabet.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
And the last thing I have is, uh, if you've drove by, a lot, a majority of the walls have been, um, erected there at the north side of the fire station. So, now that, uh, we got the dirt work settled, everything's moving along, so.
And you're, you're going to go check it, inspect it, is that it?
The fire trucks?
Yes.
Yep, yep. So, the company.
The bat.
Uh, no, uh, they have a service, they have a service that delivers it. Uh, so the last fire truck, the manufacturer that we use is Pierce Manufacturing. The last fire truck we bought, uh, that was built in Appleton, Wisconsin. Uh, they're at, they have another plant in, uh, Bradenton, Florida, uh, where more of, this is, because this is kind of a stamped truck. Um, that's where they, they do all this out of, and so, it's part of our, um, uh, contract with them and purchase agreement.
Um, is it, how, how long's it been since we bought a new fire truck?
Uh, well, we took the purchase, uh, we took delivery of our main pumper, um, in two thousand twenty. Um, this one is a tanker truck, which is more predominantly used for the rural area. Um, and was, uh, uh, we received the grant in tw- in, uh, twenty twenty-one, and we'll just now see the truck here. Hopefully by, if everything goes well, either end of October, first part of November.
Very good.
Yeah.
Bring it and show us.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, Chief Weebold's out with it. Sergeant Kessler, do you have a report?
No.
Oh, thank you. Uh, city administrator, Bill.
Thank you, sir. First item, uh, this is just for notice in the consent agenda. Council requested the, the ordinance changes, uh, for the food trucks, uh, that's in the consent agenda. Um, have any questions? We'll try to answer them. Otherwise, uh, you can vote on it in the consent agenda.
The, the long and short of that, it's just changing it so that they don't, they have to check a box whether they've got a criminal record, instead of submitting the entire DCI thing.
Yeah, exactly. Plus, uh, the, uh, fire inspection from the fire department. Yes.
Thanks. Any of them can do. That was. Perfect, thanks.
Okay, number two, uh, for those of you who are on council, you remember, one of the goals for fiscal year twenty-three was a city ordinance review. We've completed the, uh, zoning part of that, and Dave Aids will be presenting something in October, I believe. Uh, the second one is the ordinance itself. Um, I've discussed up here previously about, uh, having Ed Higgins help us. He dealt with these ordinances for years and years, so that would be him going through all the ordinances and everything. But what I'm asking tonight is, is there something that council, since this was one of your goals, that you want changed in the ordinance? So, is there something specific that you want us to look at? If so, if you could get that to me in the next few weeks before I get Ed, uh, underway on this project? But, so you want to cha- the goal was to change the ordinances or look at, and we see if anything needs to be changed. We can't really do that. Now, obviously, on the public safety, Justin and, and Chief Weebold will have some say in that. They'll go through it. But the ordinance whole, if there's anything that you want changed, we would need to know that, so that when we make a presentation to you, we've already taken care of that, and we get it right. So, if you could keep that in mind, and maybe over the next few weeks, if there's something that, an ordinance that you want us to take a specific look at, while we review this, that information would be helpful to staff.
So, how often, how frequently do you do that, where you review the ordinances?
I don't know that it's been done for.
So, is it just on an as-needed basis? I mean, when one comes up to be reconsidered or kind of reviewed?
David, you were really the person that spearheaded this, so.
Yeah, there's, like, if you look through there and read through, there's a lot of stuff that, and stuff we deal with every day, but sometimes it'll say, uh, just, one of the things somebody had asked me about was, like, when a new building goes in, there's plant thirty trees on this lot. Well, I mean, it's thirty necessary, and, and, you know, what deemed that appropriate? Um, when we have brick facing on a building, council's brick facing, should we look into that? Um, just different things that, um, walking around, it's illegal to keep whales in the city of Boone. I don't know. That's not in there, but.
It's not in there.
Sometimes, sometimes there are sites that, that get overlooked in a fifteen-hundred-page document that just attempt to clean it up.
So, what's your recommendation? I mean, do you think that we should actually take the time to kind of review every meeting, a certain section, or, I mean, take a look at it, or?
And, and that's a big ask, but if there's certain sections, if, if you think you want to look through and see what things that don't make sense, or something that seems like maybe it, maybe it made sense in the seventies, but it doesn't now, things like that.
So, basically, forward any of that information to Bill, so staff can take a look at if it needs to be changed, just on our own time.
That would be exciting.
Something pops out and catches your eye that's a little bit odd.
Have you seen the size of that?
Be three hundred pages a night. A lot of yours was, David, a lot of yours was on the planning and zoning side, which.
Right.
We're already.
I just didn't know if, if there was a more planful way we really needed to be doing it or if we just continue, kind of comes up, we, we looked at that one.
Good question, and that's why, uh, Ed is gonna help us out. Uh, if anybody over the past thirty years, however long he was here, has really looked at the ordinance, thinks he does, and Dave now as well does that. Uh, Ed Higgins knows those ordinances probably better than anybody. So that's why I think it's important for him to go through it. And see if he has anything, and then of course we'll bring those.
And then that's, yeah, and then we look at that section.
He sees something, but again, if there's anything you all want us to look at, that would be helpful while we're going through this process.
A lot of that, David, before I was on council, I was on planning and zoning and there was lots of questions that came up in that particular segment. Um, why is it this way? Well.
So maybe that's a key one to.
Right. A lot of, some of the other stuff is, is fine, but, you know.
Okay, thank you. My next item is, if you remember a, a while ago, uh, there were some citizen or, or citizens in Boone. Uh, that requested that the state auditor's office do an audit for us. We do audit for fiscal year twenty-one, the letters in the packet. You see that, uh, we, uh, this started in May of twenty-two. We now have gotten an official letter from the auditor's office that they are not going to re-audit us.
Because of kind of a review that they looked.
Yeah.
At, I mean, they kind of did a check over it and said there really wasn't a.
Yes.
Reason.
Yes.
Re-audit.
Correct. And they worked with Houston and Seaman who does our audits every year. And, uh.
Yeah, which was.
This is.
News, they're saying.
Result, yes.
It looked fine.
Couple other items I have, uh, just a reminder bargaining is gonna begin with fire and public works. We'll have our first open meetings Thursday morning. And then I'm anticipating a closed session at the September eighteenth council meetings to, so staff can get some guidance from council. On, uh, the upcoming bargaining. And I'll answer any questions there. I know we have a few council people, so if you have any questions, I'll certainly answer them.
On the open meeting, that's open to the public, right? Cause.
There's an agenda posted. It was posted this morning.
Come through, you notify.
Yep, and, uh, it's, it's a meeting where they present their initial request to us. That's all that meeting is.
Pretty brief usually.
Yes, uh, five minutes. Uh, my last item is Swan Creek will be coming and get the desks. To refurbish them, uh, we're hoping tomorrow. And we're not guaranteed that we'll have them back by the eighteenth, by the next council meeting. So if you walk in here and see white tables. You'll know that we didn't get it back in time, but, uh, we kinda have to fit their schedule. And they're ready to go, so hopefully they'll be here tomorrow to take them and do their thing.
We could gather around the food truck. But I won't.
Well, you'll have no video or. Be wherever council directs staff.
Okay.
You just need to make sure it's on the agenda.
Yeah. Good.
That's all I have, sir.
Hey, number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like removed and discussed separately? And if not, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Hey, number seven ordinance is A, third reading ordinance twenty-two ninety-five to change how fees are set for reconnection. And to allow it to be done by resolution, chapter ninety-two, section ninety-two point one one.
So moved, second.
Call the roll.
Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second, call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Okay, B, wave, second reading ordinance twenty-two ninety-six to change the speed limit on Corporal Roger Steadman Drive, chapter sixty-three, section sixty-three point zero four. Second. Call the roll.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
I gotta do the third reading.
For the third reading.
That was the third reading, wasn't it?
No, it was waving the second.
Yeah. You're right.
Go ahead.
You're jumping.
I'm ready to get at it.
Uh, third reading order is twenty-two ninety-six to change the speed limit on Corporal Roger Steadman Drive, chapter sixty-three, section sixty-three point zero four.
So moved.
Okay, call the roll.
Bert?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Now.
Second, call the roll.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?